Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Welcome to tonight's meeting. The first item on our agenda tonight relates to citizen concerns, and this portion of the meeting is for anyone who would like to address the Board on a topic that is not otherwise on the agenda. Are there any citizen concerns at this time? Yes, sir, if you'd please approach and state your name and address, and then the nature of your concern. Thanks for being here.
My name is Harold Feig. My wife and I live at 2526 Highway 20 in Lawton.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
On October 6th of this year, a couple of weeks ago, my wife and I became aware that an assessment of our home done in March of 2016 was based upon assumed information. I have before me all the material relating to that. It seems that due to a listing of our real estate price, we had our house for sale in 2015. Assessor came out in March, and when no one was home, made the assumption that due to the price of the house, there must be a finished basement in that house. We have no finished basement. In fact, assessors came back at 3:00 in the afternoon of October 6th, went through the house, and saw that the basement was unfinished, just the way it was built in 2003. Now, we have a tax burden due to this March, based on that assessment in March of 2016, based on this grossly assumption off of a real estate ad. And our point to the Board here is that we understand taxes go up. We want to pay our taxes fairly. We have no problem paying our taxes. We don't want to pay our taxes on the basis of assumptions. It's poor business. Doesn't reflect good government. So we might have a credit for what we do to pay in March of 2018, based on that assumed evaluation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your input to the Board. We do have our assessor with us this evening, if she'd like to address and respond. And one thing, just to clarify, sir, and this can also be a point of clarification. Going forward, my understanding at this point is that those taxes have been corrected from here on out. In other words, in future years.
Yes, I'm going to run them through the Board of Review this next year.
Okay.
So the next tax statement that they receive in September will be corrected.
Okay. Thank you very much. So now to anything that you want to respond to and help to the Board?
The protocol for the assessor's office is we monitor all sales listings, Craigslist, Facebook, and this property came up. And first, we were $100,000 under assessed, and then we were $70,000 under assessed. Our protocol is to flag these parcels, go out, see if there's anything different. Usually, 95% of the time, it's a basement finished that no one has gotten a permit for and picked up. We did leave a door hanger on 216 of 17 for the property owner. My two appraisers were in the car, watched the property owner take it out, shut the door. Then, on 316, we did send him out an assessment notice. I have a copy here of the assessment notice. There are dates on here to appeal if he did not agree to this value. No one did appeal to that assessment notice. In Code Section 441.24, if a person refuses to furnish the assessor with the information that they need, they shall proceed to list and assess the property according to the best obtainable information. As soon as he called and set up an inspection, or no, excuse me, he came into the office. We went out immediately that day. We corrected the basement finish. I agreed to run it through the Board of Review, so he does not have to pay taxes for the next year. Legally, there is nothing I can do as far as his taxes, due to the fact that he did receive an assessment notice, and he did not protest during the time.
Thank you very much. And now my next question is going to be going to my left, your right, to our Assistant County Attorney. And the question will be legally, there's nothing that the assessor can do. We have been in a somewhat similar situation, not based on the city assessor.
Okay.
And an error, and I'm not saying this was an error in the particular. There seems to be some confusion on what happened. But what legally can the Board of Supervisors do or not do in this situation? I know the assessor's hands are tied, except for future assessments. So what can we, or can we not?
I'd just like to say this, Acting Chair. I don't think this is appropriate venue to resolve this dispute.
Okay.
We will certainly look into it, talk with, you know, the agreed party, as well as our assessor's office.
Okay.
During the week, and try to work this out, but I just don't think.
Then you can come back with a recommendation if there's something that we can do, and we will do what is in our power. But I want to make sure that it's within the confines of what we can or cannot do legally. So you will be owed a response on behalf of our county attorney and Board of Supervisors in order to follow up with you folks. So we appreciate you being here. That doesn't resolve your issue for tonight, but you have our assurance that we will follow up and see what's within the purview of the Board to do.
May I make a final point?
If you'd approach, absolutely.
I appreciate it, Commissioner. Thank you. However, no one at my house, myself included, ever denied anyone who appeared in person entry into the house. Now, our house faces the northeast, and whatever hanger you may put anywhere on the front porch, any wind over 15 miles an hour, that hanger's going to be in the next county. A letter would be probably more appropriate, which anybody could respond to. We're not here complaining about the fact that taxes go up. I didn't come back to you during the April period because the taxes went up. I came here today because the taxes were assessed on an assumption based as a real estate ad. And quite frankly, to the Board of Supervisors, that sounds like poor business, that you get taxed on an assumption. I rest.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you folks addressing. Thank you for being here and giving us another perspective, and we will owe you a response in the near future. Thank you very much, Mr. County Attorney. Any other citizen concerns that are due the Board at this time that are not related to something that's on the agenda? Hearing none, I, yes?
Just got one quick one, Chairman. During 2016, I came to the Board on this particular topic, which is, we were applying for a grant. We got like 12 community partners trying to respond to victims of domestic violence, both our assessment, corrective action, as well as any issues that they may have. I'm just here to tell you today, I'm happy to announce that we have received that grant, and we will be meeting all of our partners to assess our next steps. And at that point, I will be expected to come back to the Board requesting permission to initiate the hiring position, because we've received funding for a part-time Assistant County Attorney to work specifically on this particular grant, so.
Very good. Thank you for sharing that. Appreciate the work that you're doing on that. Any other citizen concerns? Hearing none, we are to the approval of the agenda, and I would move approval of that agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Radek. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. For the good of the audience, Supervisor Ung is with us telephonically from?
Carousel.
What was that?
Carousel, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure where that's at, but some undisclosed location. Thank you.
Sounds like he's on a carousel.
A carousel, okay. We are to the consent agenda. So Items 3 through 6 constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. These items will pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a Board member. I'll read through these. Number 3, approval of the minutes of the October 10, 2017 meeting. Approval of the minutes of the October 6, 2017 special meeting. Approval of the minutes of the October 12, 2017 special meeting. Number 4, approval of the claims. Number 5, human resources, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. And B, authorizing the chairman to sign the authorization to initiate the hiring process. 6, under county auditor, A is to receive David Folsom as clerk of Willow Township, and B is to receive Daniel Folsom as a Willow Township trustee.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. We are now to the regular agenda, and Item Number 7 is under myself. It's approval to have the Woodbury County Board of Supervisor liaisons to the governing Board move at the next governing board meeting that the Sioux Rivers Regional HDS dissolve and terminate. I'll make some opening comments. We'll ask then if there's any Board discussion, and we'll open it up to public input. The reasons for this motion and these are at the advice of legal counsel. First, termination of the region is a more desirable outcome than withdrawal by Woodbury County for all member counties. And just to give you a little background, if you look at the 208E agreement, the 208E agreement asks for withdrawal by November 15th, and most of the other 208E agreements also ask for entrance into another region by November 15th. So there's a timeline we're up against. Typically, that's to be ahead of the budget season. I think it is in the best interest of Sioux and Plymouth County as well, because they have seen that this Board has already voted to withdraw by a majority vote. And withdrawal will likely necessitate termination anyway, because Sioux and Plymouth County cannot stand alone as a region. We had a discussion with DHS Director Foxhoven, as well as Gretchen Kramer and Rick Schultz, and it's clear that the direction of DHS is to move toward larger regions, not towards smaller. And in fairness and abundant transparency, they made it clear, Woodbury County will not be allowed to stand alone. That was a question that we had asked. There is nothing within Iowa code that allows for it right now, and Polk County is the only special case that made it as the one of four. So the 208E agreement has more detailed procedures for winding up the region upon termination than upon a member's withdrawal as well, and I think it's fair to both Sioux and Plymouth County to begin looking in that process. I've made it clear, there's no animus towards either Plymouth or Sioux. In fact, if Plymouth or Sioux wanted to petition to become a part of Rolling Hills to our east, there's no objection. We are not approaching them collectively as a team, but we have no problem if they would petition to go either east or north, as we are looking either east or south. And so with that, I also just want to make some other clarifying comments, and then I want to let you know that we have voted to allow withdrawal, but we have not withdrawn, because that takes written notice to the governing Board. What I'm asking for tonight is allowance for Supervisors Radek and myself to be able to move at the next governing board meeting, that the region dissolve and terminate, and that we go our separate ways. So let me just make a few other clarifying comments. We want to keep at the forefront any discussion that mental health services are not going away, despite some of the fear that may be out there, that we will keep high-quality mental health services at the forefront in our discussions with both Rolling Hills as well as Southwest Iowa. Also want to let you know a couple other things that I think are important. This is not about one issue. This is about many issues over the last three years. Under then-Chairman Mark Monson, who asked to raise a prospect first, then under myself as Chair, now under Chairman Ung and Supervisor Radek, there's no coincidence that four different Supervisors from both parties have looked at leaving the region for a variety of reasons. We've covered them the last two weeks, so I won't rehearse all of them tonight. But those are the opening comments, and then I would open it up for any Board discussion, and then I'd open it up to any public comment before we vote.
He would probably want to clarify its effect of June 30th at the end of the budget year of?
Right, right, and that's a good point. So all of this is to say that anything that's in the 208E agreement currently, including all the funding that has been promised, and I'm asking and hoping Sioux and Plymouth Counties will honor what's in the budget right now, but that will go through June 30th. As we have said, all funding, and we have talked about this at length, has not changed during this current fiscal year through June 30th, so thank you for the point. Other questions, comments, discussion? Supervisor Potabah?
Just a couple, and you already answered one of them when you said this was through legal advice. Our county attorney's been involved with this?
Outside legal counsel, the Hydman Law Firm.
Oh, okay. Just for this issue?
Yes, and extensively, they've navigated the process for the last three years, and it's something that we've utilized them for, for the last three years.
I wasn't aware of that. I thought you just used our county attorney, but, okay. My question, and I guess it might be more to Dennis, if we withdraw and they don't vote to dissolve and terminate, are we going to lose any money up there? Are we going to leave anything on the table? Maybe you know better.
Yeah, so it's a legal.
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe.
Yeah, it's a legal question. Here's the legal conundrum. There could be an argument to be made that a member that withdraws loses the funding property and so on. That's why we're asking for dissolution, because we think that it makes sense, if the three counties know that this isn't going to work, to sit down and come to agreements on what was put in, what will be taken out. They can't stand alone. So the way that DHS characterized it is it would leave two orphaned counties. It clearly can't be a region. And so by virtue of that, instead of having the legal argument with them, and a protracted one at that, that I think would be in nobody's best interest, I think dissolution would be better.
Well, then that was my biggest fear, is if we did this, if we were to lose money.
Yeah.
Because the next question won't be until we get to the next step, joining a new region, if that's going to cost us more, but that's down the line somewhere.
Right, right. Other questions, comments?
Chairman, if I ask for clarification also?
Sure, if you'd approached the podium.
I know I'm just a citizen, so I can't ask for a point of order, but my question?
Name and?
Jim Rickstner, 114 Midville Avenue, Sioux City, Iowa.
Thank you.
My question in terms of clarification is pretty direct and pretty simple. If you go to the region and the region votes not to let you withdraw, is that the rationale that you have changed this resolution?
No.
Because they could do that.
And that would not be binding. Nothing prohibits, and this is at the advice of legal counsel, nothing prohibits a member withdrawing, which I think is a good thing, because you can't be held hostage.
Well, no, and I agree with all of that, but my point is, according to how I thought the 208E agreement read, and I did read it, that I thought you had to have the vote, a majority vote, to accept someone from withdrawing. You do not?
No. And the 208E, which is not a bastion of clarity, and I think if we had it to do over again, there is a certain provision early on that says any member may withdraw, and then there's one later on that says it's contingent. We believe that it's clear in the first instance that we can withdraw.
Okay, so it is a little muddled. That's all I'm trying to understand, because it would seem to me, and I'll sit down, it would seem to me, it might be in the interest of Plymouth and Sioux County to not allow Woodbury County to withdraw, for all the reasons you've already expressed, which is they cannot stand alone, and they may not want to go somewhere else.
Right. And I think that's a good point. What I would hope to bring to the Region Board, which is October 30th now, is I think it's in all of our best interest because of the timeline and planning. And as I've said before, if we end up with Sioux and Plymouth County to our east, there's no issue, at least on my part, or maybe anybody else's.
Thank you for your perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Rickstner. Others from the public that would like to address the Board on this issue?
My name's County Barrett. I'm the advocate for the Sioux Rivers Region, Woodbury County, Plymouth County, and Sioux County, hired by all of three of those counties. In all things, there should be a natural flow. There should be, anyway. And I feel that God was involved when He made the region of Woodbury, Plymouth, and It's my thinking. Both counties have good services, and we utilize more services in Plymouth and Sioux than any other counties. When I look at the other regions, I don't see that same flow. The majority of residents placed out of country, out of county, go to Plymouth and Sioux. Those residents, both out of the county and in this county, are experiencing anxiety because of what you are doing. That was my concern when I stood here two weeks ago and told you that the Sioux Rivers system of service is not broken. They work well together. Why did you not listen to me? Who are you looking out for? I don't feel it's the people of Woodbury County. As I said, we don't utilize services to the east of us. When I was the advocate of three of the seven counties of Rolling Hills, we did use some of their services, but they're no longer, they're no longer in existence anymore. I have to believe if they accept you into their region, it will be because they believe Woodbury County taxpayers will help them. Last week, you passed the community of Danbury. You praised them, and I do too. I happen to be born and raised in Danbury. The week before, you were very negative concerning the supervisors of Sioux and Plymouth. I was embarrassed. Why would you not treat them politely? Mr. Ung, who's not here this evening, when you?
I'm right here.
Where was your respect when you played a tape with just a snippet of a meeting that was only the argument? If you had played the whole tape, you would have, it would have contained the part where Mr. Taylor was trying to get them to buy into something they didn't agree with. Arguments are natural when that's what's going on. You tried to use it as a cause for disbanding. That was wrong, in my belief. Plymouth and Sioux have good services. Their supervisors know that. They don't have to be micromanaged. In the interest of people we serve, you need to change your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Ung, your name was brought up. Do you want to respond or not?
I would say that the point's been missed by someone who would say that. The tape was not played to justify cause for disbanding. It was to display what our Board meeting was not to be like, and it was successful. There's been some requests to play more of it. That's a never-ending invitation, because it's taken out of context unless you play the entire two-hour meeting, and that's not something I was going to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ung, sir.
Yeah, I'm John Hanlon. I live at 304 Bennington Court, Sergeant Bluff, and I'm also the President of Goodwill Industries. We provide services through the Sioux Rivers Regional Association, approximately to about 100 people, and it's been a good, I think, a good alignment. I think one thing the Board ought to consider is that, right now with the Sioux Rivers Region, we have one out of three votes. If we go into another, larger association, you might have one out of maybe 12 votes. You have more influence in this region than if you go into another region. And from my perspective, as one of the human service providers, and I don't want to speak with the others, but I think they might agree, we haven't really been consulted on this or asked. And I think the consideration ought to be, what about the people that we serve? What's the concern about them, and how it impacts the organization? You know, if we have to pull out, Goodwill will still continue, but the question I have is, how's it going to impact the services of the people of the other agencies and Goodwills? That's all.
Thank you very much. Do you mind if I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Do you know what? Every year, the funding from Sioux Rivers to Goodwill Industries, is there a?
I believe it's 45,000? Ninety, ninety?
Ninety thousand.
Ninety, yeah.
Okay.
And it's being well-received, and there's going to be good outcomes on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, go ahead.
No, that was, I just wanted to know that dollar amount. I appreciate it. And that's one of the things that you can be assured of, as we talk to the different regions and have them look at the services that are provided, and going forward, we believe that we'll try to represent those providers well. And I appreciate those comments. I would say this, we're one of three that consistently, I believe, are voted against. And so the two-to-ones, I can live with if they're consistent. I can live with sometimes if we're consulted. Oftentimes, that's not the case, and I think that that becomes increasingly difficult. I believe that being part of a seven-county or 12-county Board, we may have more influence than being part of this one of three. But that's just my personal perspective, having been there and on the losing end several times. Sir?
I'm Deckel Owens, 1400 Indian Hills Drive, Sioux City, Iowa. What I want to do today is just do a compare and contrast. We're thinking of pulling out. Let's look at what we had that worked. The first thing, if you look at Woodbury County and you look at where we've got our services, we need 4.3 million in order to keep the services the way we have it. If you look at our levability, it's 3.1. So we're short over a million dollars. The services have not been cut, because a million dollars have come from Plymouth and Sioux County. So if we start to move, we're going to have the same situation. If you go to Rolling Hills, we're going to need 4.3 if you want to keep the services. So where's it going to come from? Well, the first thing I assume you're going to do is raise the levy. In order to do that, you're going to raise it about $14, $15, $16 per capita. You have the same facts. You're still a million short. Add them up.
Mr. Owens, would you mind if our budget analyst responded to you as you make this claim?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So our budget analyst, could you clarify whether or not we're being subsidized annually by Plymouth and Sioux County? It would seem a tremendous amount that Plymouth and Sioux would be subsidizing. Is it the fact that they're subsidizing us over a million dollars a year, or that we're eating into reserves?
We are eating into reserves, because we have reserves to eat into at the present time.
And what will happen if we continue on the same route for the next two to three years? What will happen to our one-time, to our ending fund balance?
If we stay on the same path we're on right now, our ending fund balance will be down about zero, according to information I have received.
Not only the ending fund balance zero, what do you project that it will be eventually in three years?
Well, if we go on a path that we're predicted we'd be in a hole.
Okay, and that is not borrowing somehow from Plymouth County that is subsidizing us by over a million dollars? I just want to make sure.
What will happen in the future, our per capita will eventually get quicker to the maximum we can levy.
So taxes will go up severely in Woodbury County? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, because I want to clarify when we hear statements like, "We all have the same data," that on record, I want it to be known, our budget analyst disagrees with that. Thank you. You can continue.
When we get done, not today, I will bring my figures, and I'll meet with Mr. Butler.
I appreciate that very much.
The key is that we're in deficit, no matter how we do it. So if you go to Rolling Hills, and you're going to keep the same services, and that's about 4.3, so then you're going to have to raise the levy. I assume that's going to be one of the choices. So you raise it $14 to $16 per capita. You're still a million dollars short. And where's that going to come? You've got to cut, you're going to cut.
And I would just say, we're?
What are you going to cut? I can tell you some that you're going to do. I understand that. One program's going to get cut is the ARC summer program. I'm sure that's going to happen. We serve, right now, if you leave the Sioux and Plymouth, we have students. We serve, right now, if you leave the Sioux and Plymouth, we have students from Woodbury County, we have them from those two counties, and we run our program because we can have those joint daughters. When that goes, we're going to lose our program. That's over 100 kids. It'll potentially be 150 families that are going to be impacted.
Can I ask you again, Mr. Owens, where you're getting your information from? The ARC is going to be cut? Because again, I want to-
Are you saying I'm not capable of finding my own information?
No, I'm just asking you to please cite it. Because it's important when we say that ARC is going to be cut, I want to know where you have heard that information. It creates fear?
I have not heard it.
Okay, thank you.
Some of them have to get cut.
That, that-
And I am assuming that what you're going to do is take some of those that got waived in, waived in, because those are children programs. I assume that's, I've heard different statements from you and Mr. Ung that's made those statements about the core services and so forth. It doesn't matter if it's not the ARC, it's going to be somebody. So what are we going to do? You're going to cut the employment grants? That's a possibility. Possibility, if you go out, is what about stabilization? As I understand, the 208E, that's going to stay if they continue to run that region.
And, and just to clarify, we said that they cannot stand alone as a two-county region, that that won't-
It is my belief that they'll get a one-year waiver and they will bring somebody in. Everything we're talking about is, is just projection. So my projection are just as valuable as yours. The third thing I want you to think about, if we don't have the stabilization, and if we want to keep those services, they're controlling. We don't even know who's going to manage them. Second thing, as I understand, it's about 400 bucks a day. Woodbury County is a large user of that. So you're not, if you have five or six people, you're looking at thousands of dollars.
And why would Sueland Mental Health not help manage that?
We'd let somebody else speak to that. Or what you're saying, you're not going to use stabilization?
I've never said that. I've never said that we're going to cut ARC. I've never said all of these things that raise this general tenor of fear, but aren't based on any real fact.
They are faced on reality that we're going to be short a million dollars, and things are going to have to get cut.
If we stay as we are right now, I agree, that we will be in deficit, as our budget analyst has said.
If you go to Rolling Hills, if you do what I've said, you're still a million short.
And if we go to southwest Iowa, will our levy rate be guaranteed for five years at a lower rate? Potentially. These are all things that we will take into consideration, but we will keep mental health services at the first, foremost.
And are you saying you're going to keep them at 4, 4.3 million?
We don't know. We don't, we know that we can't go this way, as our budget analyst has said, if we stay in Sioux Rivers without a 400 and some odd thousand-dollar deficit. And so yes, there will have to be some hard choices here as well. That's a reality.
I understand that. I've been working in this field for over 70 years. So I know a little thing about what we're talking about. If you really look at it, and I'm going to go back to what John said, when you're in a, in a region of three, you go in a region of eight, seven of those counties have been working together, I don't think you're going to get a lot of, of people saying what you want, you're going to get voted for. I really don't think so. Now, the last thing I want to say is, almost everybody in this room has been here long enough to know that there's not been this kind of a problem previously. When Jackie Smith was on this board, Larry Clausen was on, I'm sure there was differences, but they were resolved. What I am saying, if I was sitting on this board, and each of you are going to have to make that decision, what we're doing tonight, and what we have been doing, is not good. It's a mess. And we're not taking into effect the impact it has have on persons that need help. We're not doing that. If you think about it, sitting there, honestly, you've said a lot of things that I agree with. Number one, you don't know what's going to happen. So why are you going to vote to get out until you figure out something? When I try to make a decision, I think I pretty well know the outcome. If you don't know the outcome, why do you get into it? The next thing to think about is, and I know this is going to be like a lead balloon. Typically, when you have problems in business, and you're having differences of opinion, the people that are working, sometimes you just change them. In school, for instance, we have kids that can't work under a teacher. Being a principal, a lot of times we take them out, and they get another teacher, it works. You have two supervisors sitting right here that have a lot of experience. They've gone through a lot of situations, probably more than, than this one. Before you get out, I would think of maybe four or five months, I would have two gentlemen that are sitting here to see if they could work with those counties. Now, I know that's a negative, but when you look at a mess to get out of it, I can tell you, if, if we do things like this, this, the people of the county will feel like we've really done it correctly. So that's where I come from. I think if you vote tonight, I don't think that's wise. I think you need to look at another way to solve your problems.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And just, I would note that we did change the chair of the region up there. We also changed the two supervisors who represented Woodbury County. In my mind, the same effect. Anybody else who would like to address the board?
Brad Lego at 121346th Street, Sioux City, Iowa.
Thank you very much.
And I'd like to thank Dr. Owens for standing up here. I'm sure all of you are aware of the, the concept of unintended costs. How much of our, how much tax money does your county get out of sales taxes?
In total? Dennis, do you want to give a specific figure?
On local option, sales tax, which is the only sales tax we actually get, our infrastructure gets around 450 to 500,000. Our secondary roads gets, which we use for tax relief, well, low over 2 million.
Okay, $2 million. Now, think about this, you know, we're talking, I don't, you know, you were raised here in Sioux City, and I watched you grow up. But, you know, little, little counties and little, little communities think a little different than we do. And those folks up in Sioux County have another market area that they can go to, and many of them do. And the ones that come down here just might not want to come down here anymore. You know? Some of these folks have real long, long thoughts on that. And just, you know, I'm, I'm not putting it out there it's going to happen, but I'm thinking, you know, there may be a number of them that just don't want to come down and do business with us anymore. Give that some thought when you vote. You know, how many tax dollars are we going to lose over time? Because they feel like they have been really disrespected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Gentlemen, I am not a citizen of Woodbury County. I have been with New Perspectives Incorporated here in Sioux City for 30 years. Yes, I started when I was 10. And I would just like to say-
Clarifying that, by the way. I was just, I was doing the math quickly, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thankfully, I do not have your job of trying to run a county. However, I have been a provider of services to people with disabilities for those 30 years. And when you speak of not being consulted, you know, regarding issues at the regional level, I think that all of the Woodbury County Sioux City providers feel the same way right now. I mean, in the last two or three weeks, boom, all of a sudden, we're leaving the region. As a provider that has been in the region since its inception, we have had nothing but positive interaction with all of the people from the region. And I feel that the Sioux Rivers region is very supportive to services and the people of all their counties. And it is a fear factor right now. Because we're jumping in to things that you don't know really what the services are that there, that we can provide if we are part of the Rolling Hills or the southern region. We, do we know what the levy is going to be? Is it going to be more? Is it going to be less? I mean, I think, I realize there's a timeline, but if we could perhaps slow this process down just a little bit and get more information from the other regions as to what we will be looking at as far as services, because in their 208E, you know, the region has to have the same services, blah, 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 you know? And again, as far as the $90,000 annual grant from Sueland Region, our community employment department, which currently has approximately 75 people in it, could not exist without the $90,000 grant right now because of the funding through HCBS MCOs. So I, I guess, our fear is that we, as a county, are jumping into something and we don't have all of the facts. And that is what is very scary to most of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that perspective.
It would be a new perspective for, she didn't, you didn't give her name as Jolie Quarter, for the record.
Thank you, Jolie.
Nate Vander Plaats, 2214 South Maple, Sioux City. I work over at, at Goodwill Industries with John and Gary here. And over the last week, week and a half, I've been trying to figure out what this is about. What is it about? Is, is it about counties not getting along? Is it not, is it about there being a problem with the 208E?
Is that a question you want to respond to?
Yeah, am I on the mark?
Yeah, absolutely. And there's about 15 other things that we have issues with. Do you want me to name them?
It is not about the 208E. It is not about counties getting along. It is about the people you are here to serve. Period. If you can't get along with two other counties, that is not a problem for the people we serve. Now, the honest reality is, the people we serve don't vote. Guess what that means? When you cut those services, and you will cut services, they're impacted. Not you. Very few other people in this room would be impacted. But you're tossing this around like it's a childish game around who's right and who's wrong, and not about what's the right thing to do. That's what you need to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I, I would just respond to that. The assumption predicated on you will cut services, and then we've also heard here are the services that are going to be cut, I think is, is premature. And I would also say this, having visited things like the Friendship House and the Crisis and Stabilization Center, I couldn't agree with you more. But I will tell you that part of what I'm fighting for is those services here in Woodbury County that I think are getting lost in the mix.
But, any providers, do you feel that your services are being lost in the mix?
Well, and I will tell you this as well. I have spoken to providers who, through a culture of what I would say is fear. Don't speak. Again, if you have a culture of fear-
Not a single provider I've spoken with.
Okay, so if you have a culture of fear, that for speaking out or for-
That's very-
Right, right. But by the very nature of not wanting to say, "This is what we fear," there's going to be repercussions for speaking out. I think that that says a lot.
Okay. Well, we'll go with the phantom providers.
Well, you can characterize it as that and, and have that conjecture that you're right.
I guess, you know, one thing I'd point out, that information, you know, an email that said was sent about the information I asked for, which was, you know, who we partner with, whether or not they're Core or Core Plus, what dollar amount, that kind of information. Then to say, "I received the email," the email that was resent was not that. It was just kind of like a checks payable of last year. What's interesting is Goodwill was not listed at $90,000 provided to them. NPI was not listed at 90,000. They weren't listed, but it was at $300,000. You know, the information we asked for, we never receive, and it's never accurate. We're told one thing, and then told the exact opposite the next meeting. And, you know, I, I think, you know, to me, the, the solution is to find a, an organization that can be organized, and I think it'll be better for providers, it'll be better for taxpayers, it'll be better for everyone. The assumption that taxes are not going to go up on the mental health levy if we stay in Sioux Rivers is wrong. It's going to go up. It's guaranteed to go up. We've planned ahead for that. So, you know, I, I feel as though, as a board, we are trying to make the best decision for everybody in Woodbury County.
Yes.
Your question. The Sioux Rivers region-
I remember we gave money for your building and construction, but-
Well, no, that was not for our building and construction.
Or vans.
That's okay. But on an annual basis, the region votes to give, to spend so much money towards community employment. And that sum of money, and I didn't bring that information with me, it's, it's quite a bit of amount of money. Hope Haven oversees that. They pay out from, they oversee, they oversee the bookkeeping. So the checks, the majority of the, the money goes to Hope Haven. Hope Haven writes the checks for the marketing. They write the checks to NPI, to Goodwill, to MITS for the grants. That's why it's not showing up, because Hope Haven oversees that pot of money for the community employment enrichment.
So again, the point I made, though, about not getting any information that's accurate is made. And Hope Haven, it shows $239,822. But down here, it does list NPI at $300,883.
Well, and that is probably, could have been, because neither one of you, at the time when this was decided four years ago, were, you know, you were not aware that this is how it was run. Yes, it could be tightened up a little bit, but they're not, not sending you the information on purpose.
And you said they're not sending, you mean not on purpose?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I got, I got what you're saying.
Thank you.
Yep. So that's, that's one of the real problems, I think, with this whole thing. When we set the levy, and I know it sounds like a small thing, you know, it can be characterized as you're not caring about people and you're, and that's fine, but it's not true. But when we get to the levy rate, that was set essentially before we even voted on it. What's the point as elected officials? Plymouth County went to equalize by a staff recommendation. They said, approve it retroactively. Okay. Or you can increase your own levy. I asked for backup material to the Sioux City Community School District, a letter that, two letters Dr. Gausman had received. Didn't put that in. He said it wasn't important. He said, "I'll bring copies, I'll bring 75 copies so everybody can see that it was not this board's funding decision that had anything to do with their current loss of an FTE." But I had to fight to get that out there, to get that information, because it wouldn't be included in the backup. I couldn't get on the agenda. You know, you, you, somebody brought up supervisors Clausen and Smith. We had disagreements. Not one time did it ever, and they can, if there was something, and Jackie or Larry, if you're listening, you can come and contradict me, but if I kept them off the agenda because I disagreed with something, never. Didn't always vote with them, but I always let them have their voice. It's not the same up there. You can't get on the agenda. Supervisor Ung couldn't get on the agenda. Our own agenda, it's not good governance. They know it, we know it. Other regions don't function like this. You get answers. You get an audit. The audit was, came back in March. None of my counterparts knew that an audit had been conducted. You know what the CEO said about the Sanford Center? I think this is actually, he said he didn't know there was money going there. Didn't know there was money going there. It was in the backup materials. 5% of your entire region budget of Sioux, Plymouth and Woodbury County. I knew there's money going there. CEO didn't. Okay? I don't call that good managerial oversight. How was the CEO evaluated? Anybody know? Yeah. The Regional Governance Board doesn't really know either. It's in the 208E that it has to be followed. So those are some of the many issues. So, Mr. Exner, unless, sir, if you don't mind, somebody who hasn't spoken, and then we'll come back to you if that's all right. we'll come back to you if that's all right. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Carter Smith. I live over off of 17th Street. The last time I gave my personal address, my flowers were taken out twice in the same summer, so I'm not giving it today. I wanted to speak on a few things. The reason why I came here today was about transparency, about how our county board of supervisors is being run. And one of the areas of transparency that I had, and this is two parts. One of the areas of transparency that I had an issue with was the fact that we called for backup security at the last board of supervisors meeting, and then when questioned about it on the meeting, it was denied and had to be rebutted by county employees. Now, I think, I will finish and then you can counter, okay?
But this, just a point of, no, excuse me. I am fine with this being brought up, not in this particular discussion. If you want to bring it up under citizen...
But it has to do with this discussion.
It really does not. We are talking about whether or not this board is going to dissolve. And transparency is fine to bring up. It's fine to bring up at the beginning. It's fine to bring up at the end. But if you can just keep those comment, your comments right now to this, and then I will allow you all the time in the world. I'm not trying to stop you from the comments that I assume you will make, but if we can just focus on this issue.
All right. Well, I think it's important to speak about fear, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
And the fact that sometimes people are afraid to speak up because of the actions that will come back at them in the long run, whether it's where they're employed at, how their yards are taken care of, who drives by. And I think the one thing to keep in mind with the Sanford Center and the groups that they work with is that they work with kids that are at risk. As someone who works in preventative health, I find that on the national level, it is often recommended that one of the most successful outcomes has to do with peer support, and that's not a licensed clinician. With the staff at the Sanford Center and the programs being delivered, sometimes the best help that someone can get is someone that understands where they're coming from and can help point them in the direction of somewhere that's beneficial, such as Sault Ste. Mental Health or one of our other area agencies. I would hope that our board of supervisors would take a long, hard look at what's being done before we make brash decisions. You know, it's uncomfortable for me as a white male of privilege to be approached about the underlying racism that appears to be present when a decision is being made. Mr. DeWitt, from what I understand, it was either your father or your grandfather that kept a collection from World War II to remind us of what happens when we let things get out of control. And I think it's important, when we look at the care that we're providing for our communities, a lot of the people that would be impacted by this decision do not have the means, resources, or time to be present to express their concerns or to deliver feedback on the services they are currently receiving. And it is short-sighted as a county if we do not take the time to do our research. There are a lot of questions that we do not have the answers to. And Mr. Taylor, I agree with you. There are a lot of hard decisions to make when it comes to taxes, levies, how things will be funded, and where cuts will be made. But I have felt, from what I have read over the last few weeks and some of the behaviors, that it is questionable how things are being done. And the reason why, the initial point that I was making tied in to this topic about Sioux Rivers, is it's because how funding is being made and what population is being served. And if we didn't have to call in security for the gun changes, the land changes, why did we have to call in extra security for the discussion on the Sanford Center and Sioux Rivers? And why was it denied on a county board discussion, an open conversation, and then our employees from the county had to discuss how it was not true? That is embarrassing. Embarrassing.
We will respond. If you want to bring that up under citizen concern, so that we can keep the topic at hand.
Oh, I think my topic's discussed.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Ung.
For the good of the public, I will respond to that either now or at the end, whenever you prefer.
I prefer at the end, so that we don't get into a back and forth exchange on what I assume will be a clarification of what happened, and our sheriff is here as well and can clarify so that the charges of underlying racism that want to paint and color a topic addressing mental health can be addressed at that time, if you don't mind.
I don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, if you would, Mr. Rixner, just someone who hasn't spoken before.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You may not have seen, you don't have eyes in the back of your head, neither...
I'm just taking a call.
Okay.
My name is Kathy Roberts. I am not a Woodbury County resident, but I am the manager of Friendship House, employed by Sault Ste. Mental Health Center. And I am terrified to stand here and say this, but I am one of those people who has told Jeremy that I am afraid to speak up. And I want to give you an example. In August of 16, the Sioux Rivers Board was ready to approve building a new Friendship House, which we desperately need. And I opposed the board simply for the location that it be put. And I'm no longer spoken to. I won't name names. I can't get emails to be returned to me. Heck, my previous supervisor even threatened to fire me in front of that board that day, which was embarrassing, but he's a puppet on their string too. This is the big elephant in the room that nobody wants to talk about. Now, we have jumped through all the hoops that Sioux Rivers has asked us to do. And on October 30th, we're going to be going in front of the board to ask them for the money that they have approved for Friendship House. Not any new money, but just what has been approved. I really hope that Sioux Rivers will follow through with what they've approved. And I hope that what I've had to say today won't impact that. But if it does, it'll be confirmation that Woodbury County is doing the right thing.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the courage of those who had smiled or derided or called something that doesn't exist. Clearly, it does. Thank you. Mr. Rixner?
Well, Jim Rixner, 114 Midville Avenue. Now, the reason I'm here is, none of us enjoy beating a dead horse, okay? And we're not trying to beat a dead horse, but you've altered the nature of the discussion by action, by making an action to dissolve the region. So I don't think it's really redundant to go through some of this again, but I will be brief, okay? Number one, I think it is accurate to say that in the history of the Sioux Rivers region, that what has happened initially was the expansion of service and the reduction of the levy. I think that's a fair statement. Now, where we're at right now is a different discussion, and I understand that. Where we're going to be three years from now is another different discussion. I understand that as well. But I just want to repeat that services were expanded primarily through the Hope Haven operation for people with intellectual disabilities and the Crisis Stabilization Center at Woodbury County. They were expanded services that probably would not have come about were it not for the region. So for that, we should feel good about it. And the levy was slightly reduced, and as a taxpayer, I feel good about that. So it's not all black and white, and I just want to make that clear. Looking out into the future, what the state's going to do, what the federal government's going to do, what Woodbury County's going to do in relation to taxation and services, you know, we can all speculate upon, and I'm not here to do that. I just think that so far, so good. Now, decision's been made to withdraw and probably dissolve the region, and it may well happen. Here's my concern, and it's the reason I'm standing here today. When you all talk, and everybody talks about the services at the Sanford Center and the services of the Mental Health Center providing therapy in the schools, I'm the only person in this room that knows that history. I know it very well, because it came out of the Safe School, Healthy Student Program, and we appealed for funding to Woodbury County, and Woodbury County granted that money. No, that's what happened, and I'm proud of that. You all have no idea how we have impacted, when I was there and still today, on the children in the schools. You have no idea how welcome we were by the principals, the teachers, the school counselors. You have no idea how many lives we've probably saved by our therapists being there. In conjunction with the work at the Sanford Center, children's lives were made better. The only real intervention and prevention in mental health is early intervention. I've said this over and over again, and I do carry the initials behind my name and the experience. The sooner we can diagnose someone with a significant issue, the quicker we can help them and save them from a lifelong disability. For the last 10 years, I have proudly gone to Des Moines as a member of the Mental Health Planning Council and as a member of the Mental Health Commission in some of those years, and said over and over and over again, all the counties in Iowa should be doing what Woodbury County's doing. We should be providing services in the school system. Yes, we all know, and Mr. Taylor, you were there in the basement of the Capitol when you were a representative, when we had the infamous discussion with Renee Schulthein, several other legislators, about whether Woodbury County could serve children or not. The conclusion was in the Iowa code, we're not mandated to do that, but you could do it. So we did in Woodbury County, and it worked out very well. So much so, when the region was created, the services to children were grandfathered in, in relation, suddenly Plymouth County has therapists in the schools, and then Sioux County had therapists in school. Fantastic. So it's one of the best things we've ever done in Woodbury County, reduced the number of kids, children, juveniles in detention. Early intervention took place, kept children out of Eldora and Toledo, which were in bad places to send anyone. So my main concern in saying all this is real simple. I'm concerned that when we talk about services to juveniles, when we talk about reducing the Sanford Center's involvement, and we talk about anything else reducing the services to children, we're flying in the face of what has worked, and we're flying in the face of the new DHS director, Mr. Foxhaven, whose whole life has been child advocacy, and told us directly a month ago in Des Moines that he intends to build a children's system that we already have in place in Woodbury County. And we'll be meeting with him again on Thursday. So I just want to be sure that we're clear about certain things. And the gentleman who spoke about peer support, I laud him, that was part of my discussion. We have people all over the state of Iowa who are not credentialed and licensed as mental health professionals. We could not function without those people, because they're able to get people to trust the system, engage in the system, and fall through in the system, because they've had a lived experience of a mental illness, and it's research-based and evidence-based. So as we move forward, whatever region you all end up in, whatever you do, let's keep in front of us the eye on what we're supposed to do, which is help adults with disabilities and children with disabilities. And that's not bifurcate, as they say in Nigglejark, children from adults. I think it's very, very important that we provide services to all ages. That's my reason for being here today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rixner. Any other board discussion before moving approval?
Sheriff Dave Drew. I have to leave at 6:00. I'm going to the meeting at the museum unity in the community, so I won't be here for the finale. So if you had a question, I don't know if you can get to that now or not, but I want to just kind of ask a question, because I have concerns. One is, and these are selfish, so hang on. We have worked for years to try to reduce our population in the jail. And so, in collaboration, we came up with this Stable Legislation Center, and it's there on whatever street that is on the north side. So we have, we have been able to keep officers from spending a lot of time in the EO. So I'm just hoping that we can somehow keep that going. And then lastly, we have a very good employee who just started on this jail alternative to help reduce our jail population, which I'm happy to report, running 234, 235 for the first few years I was in office, down to sometimes 151, 161 because of collaboration with the Public Defender County Attorney's Office, the courts, and probation and NEA. So we're starting to see some good results here, and I want to kind of, I don't want that to get lost in the shuffle. I think you're going to make sure that happens, but I don't know who owns that building, and I don't care. I just want to be able to have our officers from the PD, Sheriff's Office, Sergeant Bluff, if somebody's having a crisis, we can get them there and get them help. And then lastly, whatever the question about Marty and Matthew and everybody, what I told Major Wick when we sat there on the side is that he needed to go up and correct that and just clarify that conversation that was handled. And so I've watched the YouTube video, and I thought he explained what Matthew had asked, and Matthew had asked for additional bodies. And so in that video, that's basically what it says, so I didn't see any point in continuing on.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Sure.
Sheriff, I'm very confused by what you just said. I have a text in front of me from Major Todd Wick that says this. "I follow the sheriff's orders. We both think that everything has been clarified, and you didn't ask for extra security. I want to make a brief comment in response to Carter Smith."
Well, just a minute.
Excuse me, please. I never requested extra security. The deputy never said I did. But some people who want to believe it, some people want to believe it, so they do. They can't comprehend or even entertain a situation where I did not have some nefarious motive in making sure adequate, which was the major's word, adequate, and normal security was present to ensure an orderly meeting. Why? Because sometimes I was told there are no deputies in the meeting, and I wanted to ensure that that was not the case when we had a contentious meeting coming up. Anything else is a despicable lie, it's race-baiting, and it's asinine. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think we're just splitting here. I think it's just, somebody's worried about things. This is what Major Wick had texted me. I was on Children's Miracle Network trip, and so he said, hey, I just got off the phone with Matthew. He's asking that we attend the board meeting Tuesday. He thinks it will be contentious and wants us there if someone needs to be removed. All over, Taylor wanting to withdraw from Sioux Rivers region group and take the Sanford Center funding. That's from Major Wick. Now, I believe Major Wick. I believe Major Wick because he got up here and told the story. I think you see the video. I don't, I'm not here to split hairs. I don't care if you, you just said no. The problem was, you did ask, and I think you're getting all caught up in worrying about if I asked for additional or because, whatever you just said about additional security. I think you just mentioned that you're concerned that we're never here. I will tell you there, there have been very few times we're not here.
So here's what I would like to do at this point. I believe that Supervisor Ung has shared his perspective that he was asking for adequate security because, and you have said that you believe that it was stated otherwise. I don't want to, just as I, you know, to be fair and consistent to Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. To Mr. Smith, I don't want to continue on. We can, though, later on, but Dr. Madison is patiently waiting.
Right. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm just here to give my side and what Major Wick said. Watch the video. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Madison.
Thank you. I'm Lynn Madison, and I own property at 4623 Pope Street. Although since I retired, I live in Mapleton and love it, by the way, if you choose from Mapleton. I've always been concerned about the well-being of children. As you know, I was formerly Associate Superintendent of the School District. Children come first. I've always been an advocate for the children who cannot speak for themselves. They do not vote. They don't vote. Everything Jim Rixner said was right on target. I was also around when that Safe and Healthy Students Grant was written. We now have had all kinds of social health, mental health workers in the schools. What's different about the Sanford Center is that these people save lives, they look like the children that they... look like the children that they serve. So many mental health workers, Jim will tell you this, at Sulan Mental Health, look like you look and look like I look. It's hard for a child who is African-American, Native American, Hispanic-American to trust us. It is. It takes longer. The people at the Sanford Center get into the homes, work with the families. They provide a service that others cannot provide, at least not as quickly. So, I hope you realize that your two most top priorities are, first of all, public safety, secondly, mental health. Down the road come bridges and roads. People come first. Think about the children and do what's right here. Make sure that if you make a change, you don't impact mental health. It will impact this community down the road. You've seen Las Vegas, you've seen other places. Mental health must not be cut. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Madison. Two people from my yesteryears in education or schooling, so. All right. I believe that we've had over some hour of public input and board dialogue. At this point, I'd move to have the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors liaisons to the governing board, move at the next governing board meeting, let the Sioux Rivers Regional HDS dissolve and terminate, and we'll look for a second.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Give me Keith.
Mr. Raddick. Would the auditor please call the roll?
Aye.
Patabon?
No.
Raddick?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries four to one. We will report back from either one of the regions, or we should say, and both, should discussions continue forward and give updates as we do with our liaisons. Thank you very much for the respectful discussion. Item number eight is our Conservation Director, Rick Snyder. This is a presentation on approval of the Conservation Annual Report. I'm sorry to say that this will, unless you're changing your mind, most likely be your last.
Weeks ago.
Okay. Well, we're still holding out hope, but.
Rick Snyder, Conservation Director, for eight more weeks.
But who's counting, Rick?
No, I don't count. I have before you the Fiscal of Seventeen Annual Report of the Conservation Department. I just point out a few things on the executive summary page, our highlights for the year. We started out a year ago in July, start of the fiscal year, opening our two new camping cabins at Southway Conservation Area. During the year, we finished expanding Curtain Timber by 120 acres. We added a nice little river access on the Little Sioux River by the D-50 bridge south of Anthan. That was DOT property that they allow us to manage now. And we installed a water control structure at Little Sioux Park Lake this past spring in anticipation of some of the beach renovation work that we just started this week and will finish up next spring. First of the year, we moved all our cabin and shelter rental reservations to the online system. That's worked out very well. One of our employees has a little bit more work to do with that and balancing all that stuff, but it's worked out quite well. So, that's pretty much where we're at on, for our fiscal year, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Questions for Director Snyder. With the online system, have you noticed an uptick or a way to measurably see if you've had?
Haven't taken a close look at that yet. We'll have our year-end reports in another six weeks or so. I'm thinking there is.
Okay.
It seems that way to me, that the reservations are up.
Okay, great. And then, the other thing, and this is a dangerous thing for me to bring up because it may lead to a funding request, but how is the whole situation with the Nature Center as far as cable, internet access? I'm not using the right terms.
Not good.
Okay. Well, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you very much for your time. Okay, so, is that something that in the future we'll look at as?
We're looking for solutions. We've had different groups out there to look. They want to put towers up on the property. We can't do that in a state park, so we could get wireless. You know, we're back into trying to get fiber out there, probably. I'm willing to work with any other group that wants to put it in and split costs or something if they want to be able to sell access off that line or something. We know about what it would cost. We could, we could hire somebody to put it in and buy materials ourselves. We've looked at that. But, you know, it's a $100,000 bill to get it out there, so I think we'd be willing to split it with supervisors if you help us get good access out there. It's durable.
We'll talk about it when you're gone.
Okay. Fair enough, because I won't be, I won't be the recipient of it anyway or the beneficiary.
All right. Other questions or thoughts? Well, I just want to say thank you. This is, I think, the outstanding conservation program and system in the state, and I think it has a lot to do with your leadership, and I've always wanted to thank you very much.
Great staff, great board, and appreciate your support, too. That's where it comes from.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. I will move to receive the Woodbury County Conservation Board, July 1st, 2016, to June 30th, 2017, report.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item nine, Human Resources, Director Ed Gilliland. A is approval of the Delta Dental Renewal.
Yes, Delta Dental Renewal is a pretty standard thing. It's a, it goes up about 3% a year. That's what they do across their line of business. Impacts the county by about $650 a year. Our claims are down a little bit this year compared to last year, so it doesn't look like we're going to have to change our rates. They seem to provide great service and year-in and year-out give us the best pricing.
Thank you very much. I'll move it.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item B is acceptance of the GAB 75 report. Sounds like a firearm, but go ahead, Ed.
Yes. This is just more fun than you can stand, but.
GASB, I should have said. It says GAB.
Government Accounting Standards Board 75 report that tells us about obligations that we have, liabilities for potential employee benefits for retirees, that type of thing. We engaged, previously, we had engaged a firm that was recommended by ISAC, kind of endorsed by them. We went out and sought a different firm this year, one that utilized some pretty sophisticated actuaries. You pair the calculations that they made and the diligence that they did with work, as well as a little bit higher interest rate now than we had in the past, and it's helped reduce our OPEB liabilities dramatically. And a lot of it was the questioning and the different pieces that they had. Thanks to Michelle and some others, we were able to really gather tremendous amount of data. And our OPEB reserves will go from 5.293778 million. They will drop to 3.538394 million.
So, to somebody who's mind is trying to catch up, what does this mean as far as the fiscal impact to the county?
Well, as far as fiscal impact to the county, it means that we have to set 1.7 million less aside in the reserves. Freeze up that money for other things.
Like fiber to the.
That's, that's out of my league. I don't know.
But, but are you saying that there's now that amount of dollars that will be on an annual basis less expended?
It's, what it is, is it's, what OPEB does is you have to set aside in reserves the money to cover these potential liabilities, potential employee benefits liabilities. And what this does, it just means that you have to have much less reserves. So, there, it does free up initially some.
Dennis. Thank you very much, Ed. That was a good explanation. Dennis?
This is very similar to what we have to do for the GASB reports, where we have set aside a pension liability also. The odds of these ever being paid out are pretty much nil, none. And we, you know, use this when we go through the district health accrued fund balance. It shows they may be in negative, but that's because you have to add these back, these items back in, subtract the inflows, it comes back to positive balance. But the odds of these ever being paid out is probably zero.
But this isn't like there's a check somewhere?
No. It's not money available to spend.
If I've learned anything that starts with GASB, I start to shake.
All right. Well, I would move to accept the GASB 75 report.
Sorry.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion carries five to zero. But Keith Raddick down there is going to say his daughter was reading the great GASB, but. Item 10, Emergency Services with Director Gary Brown. A is consideration and approval to allow vacation leave donation between Woodbury County Information and Communication Commission and Woodbury County employees. Gary?
Good afternoon. Our WCICC employees, which is the information technology side and the 911 operators, are actually a separate group of employees. They're employed by both the county and the city. Their paychecks and their benefits all come through the City of Sioux City. I think on the IT side, we pay about 45% of their budget, and on the information, the communication center side, it's about 30%. I think it's coming over the phone, that screeching noise.
Yeah, it sounds like Matthew's either saw on some logs in the background or.
He's carving his initials in the bench or something that he's sitting on, I think.
So, in the last couple of years, we've had two of our, two of our telecommunicators, one had a catastrophic illness with a family member, and now we've got a young man that's got a catastrophic illness, and he's got four family, four children plus a wife. And we all, in public safety world, work real well together, and we really become kind of a big family. And the last time we wanted to do this, it was just kind of a sudden stop, no, and we didn't get much farther. And then, when, when this other employee's medical condition arose, we all started talking about it, and we would like to see if we could do something to allow county employees to donate. Right now, the city employees can donate vacation leave to city employees. County employees can donate sick time to each other. And what we're advocating is, because they're city employees, that county employees be allowed to donate sick time, just like he would receive from his comrades on the city side. He's been off work for several weeks now, and he doesn't make, I mean, 911 operators don't make a lot of money, and, you know, the bills are piling up. They've done some donation for him on the city side of vacation time. We actually have a fundraiser coming up to try to help the family out. Erica and the operators at the comm center have just, just about busted themselves in half trying to get this fundraiser put together. It's Thursday, October 19th, from 5:00 to 7:00, at the Sergeant Bluff Fire Station. You can step these to write down the date if you want. Olive Garden is providing the food, Safe is helping organize it, but we really feel like these people are a part of us. Well, they're, you know, because they, they serve the sheriff's department, they serve the jail, they serve my department, they serve all the volunteer fire and EMS people, and we would just like to get a system in place. John Moyes in favor, Lynn Setifis in favor, Wendy's in favor of it. I talked to Ed, and Ed gave me some parameters at least to get out the starting gate with. I met with Pat, and he's been doing a lot of research on it, because there are some legalities to it, and there's issues with payroll, and there's issues with taxes. And I told Pat before this meeting, I was going to get this far, and then I'm going to punt, so Pat can kind of fill you in on the legalities and the ramifications of doing it.
Can we just sort out the legalities and vote on it? Because I'm all, I'm all for it, and I can't imagine anyone not being.
I like Gary to do all the hard work, but the sheriff's office would be loathing to be, if we go with this, to go forward and be part of this also.
I do, I do have a question, though.
Thank you.
Say, if somebody were, you know, somebody that worked at the jail as a county employee, is the city able to donate if they were to need something in the future? Because that might be nice to maybe approach the council now as well, since I think we're all in favor of doing this.
I look at the, you know, kind of working with this thing. I appreciate your thought, too, but the WCICC employees, they're both of ours.
Sure, absolutely.
They're both of ours, and they're, they're not, they don't necessarily get a lot of exposure to the rest of the workforce. I mean, the IT department gets seen around the courthouse and city hall on a regular basis, and the communication center operators, we talk to them over the radio, talk to them on the phone, we rarely see them. But they are, they're our first line of defense, and they're the ones that keep our, you know, Marty, they're the ones that keep you from, they're the ones that help you go home at the end of the shift, so.
So, thank you very much for those opening comments and from the sheriff's office. I'd like to see if the auditor is going to receive the punt.
Okay.
And fair catch, or run with it.
Gary brought this to me, and we have done a lot of research on it to, the legalities is that they are not, not county employees, and we do pay for them through a 28 agreement. We contribute to their, to their appropriation that we made to WCICC and dispatch, but they are not county employees. They are city employees. And so, that presents a lot of challenges for us. And one of the things that we did, the research, is that in three, three of your contracts right now, it must be a subject of bargaining, because three contracts expressly say that county, you will not pay out vacation benefits to county employees. And that's what you would have to do in order to, in order for this to happen, because we can't, we can't do that. There's no process for us to give that money to the city employees. The way it works over the city is that they donate a vacation. They can donate vacation to other city employees. But the, when they do that, it goes to the, from the donor to the donee, and the donee pays the taxes on it. Okay? So, here, because they're not employees, we can't transfer that. There is not a way to do that, to give that money to the city. And those employees that are, that would want to do it, the county employees who would want to do it, we would have to take, they would donate hours. We would convert that to cash, and then we would take taxes out of that. And then, we have to come up with a way to write a check to the donee. Okay? One of the things I'm just going to suggest is that you talk to your attorney who does the bargaining for you to, so that you have a good understanding of why it's in the contracts the way it is now, is that it's not allowed in three contracts that we looked at. So, there'd be a way, probably, you know, if we come through the policy committee, that you could look at that. And I've always told the board of supervisors, if you have three votes, you can do anything you want. That's the way that process works, but, but it is in the contracts now that you, that you can't pay that out.
So, if that, just to clarify, just so I'm, but because it's in the contracts right now, even by a majority vote, we couldn't amend those contracts?
You'd have to check with the attorney.
Okay.
I did visit with the, or Wendy visited with the attorney for the labor representative of the communications operators, and he's absolutely fine with it, and I think he would help champion the cause of the other unions if we needed that.
But it sounds like we need to have that.
Yeah, because that's what it, that's what it is. It's a payout of vacation money. Right now, the county carries about $400,000 to $500,000, I think, in liability for the accrued benefits of, of vacation. And once you pay that out, it actually, it's a small amount, and it's not going to occur very often, but it's, but it still will cost the county. You have to pay the share of the taxes. The donor would pay taxes, and the county has to pay a share of that, too. So, there, I mean, it gets complicated, a lot of things. It doesn't happen very often, and if it comes through the policy committee, you could do that. You have to check with all the attorneys on those things, but it's not an easy, it's not an easy step.
Supervisor, thank you.
Well, in essence, we can't do it, and nobody's opposed to doing it, but probably for the moment, the best thing to do is just make a personal donation.
Everybody's been doing that as well, but it's. But it's kind of, sends it every message when you, when you're willing to give up a day off for your COVID. And I think that's the message that we want to send. This family's a great family.
So we can, in some fashion, at least blame lawyers that we can't do this?
Well, I don't think Pat's saying we can't.
Well, when's the, when's the contract?
Take an addendum. Each of the unions could sign an addendum and go.
That's my point, is it's, it's a volunteer for each union member. You're not forcing the union to do something. So they're not going to have a grievance with it, because we would just ask the members, who wants to do this? And whoever voluntarily comes forward to donate eight, sixteen hours, whatever they're going to donate, then you're like what Pat said, then it's, okay, you take that out the books, you turn it into cash, you take the taxes out, and that cash goes to, to the individual.
Right.
So I don't, having some dealings with being the past union president, I don't see a grievance or a problem with our contracts, because you're going to be asking for volunteers. Somebody's going to volunteer, say, yeah, I'll give you sixteen hours, you know?
I think you'd still need to just, a one-page addendum to each contract that we've agreed to allow.
Yes, yes.
And that would be simple.
We won't, yeah.
Or take our policy and attach it to their.
Okay, so here's.
We won't do something in violation of a contract.
Right.
Right, right. No, we want to do this right.
Yeah. So here's my question. This sounds great. It sounds like everybody's, who's holding the ball now, to keep our football analogy, and who will contact Class Law Firm?
Ed'd be up to, Ed'd to do that, to HR.
So I, I think that if you can, if HR can reach out to Class Law Firm and say that there's the general, this is all right, consensus of the board to want to know what the mechanics and the means of accomplishing this would be, per a one-page addendum to the contracts, how do we get her done?
It's, and I think it would be appropriate just to take it through the policy review committee.
And then once that information is found at a policy review committee, I think we'll all get there and appreciate the idea being brought up. Anything else you want to add on?
Well, I provided, we got it, the city's donation policy, and Ed has that. And then he and I have talked, and I think he may have already started drafting, a draft policy to take, because I think there's a policy review committee in November coming up. I think is what Ed told me, there was going to be one in November, so.
Okay. Well, let's follow up on that, and we'll go from there. We appreciate you bringing it in front of our attention.
Yeah, because without, without the support of the board, we really couldn't take it any farther. We're looking for that, not from the board that says, okay, guys, keep.
All right. Sounds good. Let's talk paramedics. So the next item is emergency services to hire two full-time operations officers, paramedics in one, three, one and three quarters, part-time operations officer, paramedic by January second.
A total of two point, or two and three quarters position.
Thank you.
I don't know if that's stated clear enough there or not. But since nineteen eighty-two, our department, and matter of fact, the region, has had a very good working relationship with Sulan paramedics. Top-notch group of people that deliver extremely good patient care. They, in the past, what they do is they do what's called a tiered response or a paramedic assist with us in the rural area. So the, the volunteer squad gets the call, based on the information either the dispatch is able to tell us, or when we arrive on the scene, the condition of the patient, that's when we start to tier up. And that could be Sulan paramedics, that could be Mercy Air Care, that could be a squad from another county that maybe has some specialty services. But that tier takes place. And what we're out to do is try to deliver the best possible care in the field of the patient, increase their survivability. We moved out to Climbing Hill a little over twenty years ago, and we've been responding for, on behalf of the county, as a tiered response group from Climbing Hill. The nice part about the Climbing Hill location is generally, we're moving towards them at the same time they're moving towards us. A lot of the calls, Woodbury County's a big county, it's, it's a long way across, and it's a long way deep. The squads that probably don't get the greatest advantage of us with the tiered response right now are locked in Sergeant Bluff and Savings, because they tend to get on the scene, and they've got resources, they've got their own paramedics, and they tend to be moving along. However, we do go in with them several times a month, when they're short-staffed or when they don't have a paramedic available. Right now, we have a paramedic on Monday through Friday, one week, seven AM to seven PM. And the, the second week, seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, or Monday through Thursday. So every other Friday, after seven o'clock at night, and weekends, we don't have any paramedic-level coverage. There are a few paramedics in the county, primarily over in that northwest corner. We do call when we need it for a paramedic assist from Sulan. Part of the problem with Sulan is they come, become just extremely busy. And they don't like it when they can't honor a tier request, but they become really busy. And it's, it's hard for them to break a crew loose. For the last two or three years, we've been talking with the board, and you gave me a position three years ago in my budget asking, and we put him on strictly on days, at seven to seven, because that's when Sulan paramedics was the busiest, and we were having the most trouble getting paramedic assists from that shop. So we, we plugged that hole first, the best we could with one guy. The way we're set up now with our system is seven to seven, and there's two guys on. We go to the call, we're automatically dispatched, we go to the call, we get there, we determine, based on the condition of the patient, who needs to go. Just to give you an example, we had two calls go down at the same time. We had a lip to system in Anthem, we had a trouble breathing in nurse, in Crecheville. The frontline squad, the first squad out the door, started for Anthem. They were about three miles away from Climbing Hill. The second call come in for trouble breathing. I then dispatched to go to Anthem and pull the paramedic and send him and the other guy to the trouble breathing call in Crecheville. So we move our resources back and forth around all the time. If there are two of them on together, and they go to a call, and a paramedic's not needed, the paramedic stays with the squad. The basic EMT goes in with the patient to the hospital, and then generally speaking, what we do is like, if it's a pushing or a mobile call, we just hang out at mobile on Highway twenty and pick our partner up on the way back. So we're not driving all the way to the hospital, we're not just hanging out cushioning, we're going back to the central location in the county that makes us available for the next call. There are literally days where we'll have, the duty shift coming off, we'll be out on a call. A lot of our calls come in between six and eight. The guys coming on duty will be on a call. We'll split that team to two calls, and on my way to work, I pick up a fourth call. So there's times that one paramedic or one team falls way short of the need. There's twelve transporting ambulances in rural Woodbury County, two first response services, and three counting us. There's Mercy Air Care that we use, we use them a lot whenever it's appropriate to use them. They're, they're incredible service, but they, they have limits with weather and landing zones and that kind of stuff. But the idea would be to put full-time, two-man squad, and that's for a safety reason as well. It's not safe right now in this day and age for one person to be going in and out of people's houses in the middle of the nights. And in some of these residences we go in and out of, we're not armed, and we're a lot of times there before anybody else is. And even with the extrication scenes and stuff like that, it's, it's hard to do extrication by yourself, it's hard to do CPR by yourself. It's just not, you just, it's not a good situation. Our volunteer squads do great. We get, we've, I think we've been able to sustain what we've been doing now for better than ten years because of the relationship that we have. In Iowa, no one, and you've seen a big push in eastern Iowa, if you're looking at any of the eastern Iowa media right now, there's a big push in eastern Iowa to try to make EMS an essential service. And I'll translate that for you, it's the county board of supervisors pays for it. That's what EMS becomes an essential service is, because there's nobody else. No one is required by law to provide EMS. Townships may, they're mandated for fire protection. Cities don't have to provide ambulance, counties don't have to provide ambulance, the state of Iowa doesn't have to provide ambulance. The City of Sioux City, January first, will go to their own ambulance service. I've talked extensively with Chief Everett, we have a great working relationship, and he has assured me that the resources they're putting together to meet the city's needs. And I can't blame you, the city taxpayers are going to pay for it. However, he's also committed, as well as my other counterparts across the region, but in the event of a mass casualty situation or something really bad happening, we, we're going to go where the need is at as a force to, to stop the dying and get people to the hospital. Sulan paramedics, last I knew, which was Friday of last week, they intend to come back as a transfer transport ambulance service. They've said, hey, if we've got a crew available, we'll be more than happy to help you out. But they lose money on every nine-one-one call, but they're definitely going to be willing to help us out. And there'll be times when all of our resources get consumed. Burgess in Ottawa's got paramedics, a lot of times we'll, we'll lean on them from the south. Atta Grove has just started up a nurse paramedic exception program for their transfers coming through Woodbury County. So they've got ALS onboard, their ambulance is when they're bringing them to Sioux City, because that used to be a problem. They'd get about halfway through Woodbury County, and something bad happened. Lamars has got paramedics. North Sioux, right now, they don't know what they're going to do, Green Union County. I talked to the fire chief over there yesterday afternoon, and they have no idea what they're going to do. South Sioux is gearing up to staff their own ambulance service, they've got two rigs.
Are any of these going to impact us? Are any of these going to impact us, potentially?
No.
Okay.
Everybody, quite, quite honestly, everybody's trying to maintain a level of service to their citizenry.
So with that, and I like to err on the side of more rather than less, so both this and your opening comments have been very, very good questions, discussion, thoughts.
You know, I would just add quickly, is we're coming in, I'd like to do this in the middle of the budget year. It's a hundred thousand dollar impact, I'd like to get the program rolling by the first of January. It's a two hundred thousand dollar impact on every budget thereafter. It probably just goes over two hundred by December, get the extra drugs and the medications and the uniforms and stuff that, two and a half more people, two and three quarter more people, it's not going to be a lot, but it's, it's going to be right out of two hundred thousand dollar a year ticket. We bill the services two hundred bucks, if they collect, we collect. But if we, if we start doing the transporting, and we take all the building, all of these volunteer services are going to go away, they won't have the money to operate, and then we couldn't put enough ambulances out on the street to cover this county. We need to do everything we can to keep those volunteer squads alive and as healthy as possible for as long as possible.
So one of the.
Mr. Chair.
Just really quickly, and then I'll call in supervisor on. One of the reasons that I wanted this to become informational was that I think it just lent itself to having the discussion, especially since it's in the middle of the year, to some of the funding mechanisms we can talk about. So that's one thing. Yes, supervisor on.
Question for Gary. When you and I talked about potential use of a portion of the EMS loan fund, my impression was that would be a deduction. But in the agenda item, you are talking about a two-and-a-half-year payback term. I'm just not sure that makes sense for the county to maintain a, a loan fund and then borrow from that loan fund, you know what I mean?
Correct. As you and I talked about, supervisor on, that the EMS Association, while it's the county's money, the EMS Association is the beneficiary of it. And as I indicated to you, I would, I wanted to meet with them before we went any farther with this. And it was out of that meeting, the, the association members felt that by depleting the fund by fifty thousand and not having some opportunity to put that back, they all feel the EMS loan fund has been probably one of the best things, if not the best thing, ever put in place in Woodbury County for EMS. It's given us the ability to buy rigs and equipment, not have to pay interest, we're not using pancake fundraisers money to pay interest. And then further visiting with Danny Butler, Danny brought it to my attention that the, the rules of the EMS loan fund, actually don't, the rules that were set up for it actually don't allow it to be used for personnel costs. And I don't know if you want to speak anymore to that, Danny, or not?
Yeah, I want to say a couple of things there. First, the EMS loan fund is controlled by the board of supervisors, not by EMS Association. That's controlled by the board. Second, the EMS loan fund, since I believe nineteen eighty-eight, when it established, has always been used for equipment, no personnel. We're varying from the intent and the purpose of the EMS loan fund. Third, I have checked with the city finance director, and they will be requesting the forty thousand that was set aside for SPI, because in the situation with Sulan paramedics, they're in a little bit of a problem. And we did agree during budget time that we'd use that money to help them offset that. So that money will not be available. So the recommendation or suggestion, I would say that we maybe look at other funds, such as gaming revenues, for the first six months of funding of this, if the board does approve this. Second, we will approve this during the budget hearing, if the board wants to budget for next year. Like Gary said, it'll be a two hundred thousand dollar increase in expenses. But for the six months, from January first to June thirtieth, we need to look at other funds.
So basically, all of.
How many?
Go ahead, supervisor on.
I was going to ask, how many dollars are currently idle in this loan fund?
About a hundred sixty-five thousand. No, about a hundred, one eighty-five, about one forty-five.
How much do we have in reserves, Dennis?
And which fund?
The county's big bank.
County, in the general basic fund, we're not in too bad a shape, because we're trying to rebuild them. General supplemental, there's not a whole lot of reserves there to use. In gaming revenues, we got a little over two hundred thousand available, that's unallocated.
And the big bank, and the big reserves, in our twenty percent?
Oh, we're trying to get back to the twenty percent. A goal was twenty-two percent. So really, we're trying to rebuild them and get it back to that twenty-two percent.
All of these are great, extraneous pieces of information, but just how much, generally speaking, dollar-wise, million, ten million?
Oh, grand total for all the funds?
Right.
About ten, eleven million.
Okay. So I, my whole point in this is just, I don't know if it makes sense to start mixing apples and oranges with personnel costs and going into a hundred sixty-five thousand dollar fund that will repay within two years. I just think it muddles everything up.
Okay.
We could either do it through a budget amendment, we could do it through gaming, but I don't, I don't.
Right. But the one question there, then, if we use this loan fund, to use it, where is the county going to get the money back to pay him back?
Right, right. Which is why I, this whole loan thing, that.
Doesn't want to use.
Yeah, I don't want to use the loan.
Correct.
And, and you know, I guess in.
If we do it, let's do it. If we're not going to do it, let's not.
It says a lot to the EMS Association's desire to have this happen, because they want the loan fund, but they need this, too, and that's all they were asking. And the, and the vote was unanimous, too. There was no dissension.
I'd almost rather borrow the money from ourselves and pay whatever nickels.
Pay yourselves back.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it just muddies the waters.
Probably the best way is to amend our budget through our budget process, for the board approving the hiring of the two and three-quarters, whatever, people, and pay it out of cash reserves.
Yeah. I don't have any problem with the first six months. It's after that, that I'm just trying to make sure, because we're almost making a budget decision for FY nineteen. That's my heartburn.
Correct.
Right? So I'm cool with the six months, but then I don't want to turn around after those six months and say, hey, we didn't think about further. And we're making that decision in perpetuity, right? Because, you know, once you hire somebody, so, that's the other reason why I wanted to hit the pause button and just think, did you have something, supervisor?
If we're going to pay the city the forty thousand, are they going to maintain the services the way SPI did?
No. This is basically to help them through their situation they are now in. There's an X number of dollar amount that they are kind of in a hole, and we did agree to help them, help the city fund this. We didn't, we didn't use it last year, so we carried last year and added some money to it, and I think it's right around forty thousand. But they are going to request that money this fiscal year.
In the background of that forty thousand dollars, by helping the city, the City of Sioux City with the subsidy, is we were using Sulan, and we weren't putting anything into it. And the City of Sioux City owned Sulan, but that didn't own the company, but owned all the equipment, owned all the resources, was subsidizing the service. And we're good neighbors, we were just, hey, thank you. And we weren't putting anything into the pot. So that, that, that pot of money was set aside to offset some of the use that we get out of Sulan paramedic.
So all these, the forty thousand, the ten thousand, all those just need to go away as far as we're being asked for two hundred thousand and add two-point-seven-five FTEs?
Correct. And that request should come during the budget cycle for fif, for nineteen.
Right.
My real concern is what you're expressing, let's worry about the six months now to get us to.
Well, yeah, except once we do that.
That's it.
Unless you're going to turn around and have a serious discussion about laying people off, which I don't want to do.
No.
So if we start down the tracks, the train's going to keep going.
You're right, the continuation will be part of the budget process.
Correct.
Because you're not gonna hire them for six months.
No.
You know, we've been here, I think, three years, you know, working up to this, hoping we could bring it in slow over time. And we appreciate the fact that the Board gave us one full-time paramedic. And last year, we challenged you for two more, and we didn't get them, but we asked you to bring our wages up a little bit for our paramedics, and you did that. That, in itself, is gonna make a significant difference, and we thank you for that, because we're gonna be competing with several services now to try to hire those same people. So that helped, that was good timing-wise to bump those salaries up a little bit, so.
Can I ask you three questions? Has Sulu and Paramedics been asked, or I think I maybe had Dennis reach out and make a call, on doing some sort of contractual thing? I know that's not what you're asking, you're asking for the FTEs, but have they been approached even to say, here's what we could do, and then we look at that and say, well, that's not as good as bringing on people?
I did call them last Thursday or Friday, they were supposed to get back to me, I called Mr. Welty, and he was gonna talk to his superiors, I did not hear back, so they did not intend to, but he was gonna see if they're interested, did not get a call, so I'm assuming they aren't interested.
If you give me a little background on that, there was a reach out from the City of Sioux City Council to try to give the city some breathing room to get an RFP on the street for a contract ambulance. They were offered, I think, fifty thousand dollars a month for the next six months, and even six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this next six months, just to get the citizens breathing room to put an RFP out, and they declined all of them. We're fortunate, we really want Sulu and to stay in business, because they also service our medical examiner's office, taking cases from the scene to the mortuary, where autopsies are done. And then they also have a relationship with the jail, non-emergency transfers for prisoners to and from the jail. So if we don't have Sulu and doing those, then that's gonna be an emergency, at the emergency rate done by either Sioux City Fire Department or somebody else, so.
So my follow-on is, I'd like, and however you all tag-team this, I don't wanna assume, because they're really busy, I just, I wanna at least have done the due diligence to say, they came back and they said it's gonna cost you four hundred thousand a year. And we say, well, two hundred thousand dollars a year isn't looking so bad, or it was one C, or whatever it is. I just at least like to be able to cross that off without just, you know, crossing it off because we haven't explored it.
Well, which, and the other thing, if we're gonna do that, really, you need to say, what do you want? What do we want from them? You know, because, do we want six people, or two people twenty-four seven? You know, plus fill-in time? We multitask, the employees, we do animal patrol, we do fire calls, we do rescue, we do rural address, we help the Sheriff's Department out, we actually are kinda more of a public safety officer. If we got cattle out and they're out of position, we'll go out and help them, you know? So...
But at least to be able to look at it and to say, let's just say it was, like my mom would say, a wash, if it was two hundred thousand and two hundred thousand, and they said, well, we would be able to staff people, that would, I just wanna make sure in my, I'm not up at night.
Putting an employee in Sulu and Paramedic, Sulu and Paramedic's center, a four-door sedan running paramedic level of calls, isn't apples to apples to what we are doing, and it doesn't increase the safety factor, and it, we've got the redundancy, actually. Our redundancy is very good. Some of the changes we've made the last two or four years have been good for the department, good for the county, so. But I'll be glad to Dennis to...
Okay.
He's initiated that, so.
I appreciate it, and then...
If you would let me know what you hear, if there's any further conversation from me.
Call twice today until they answer. And then the other thing is, what would happen if only two were brought on instead of two point seven five? And then my following question to that is, and this may sound like a dumb question, but I'm the one who asks them, what will happen if somebody's just not there? Is that a dumb question?
The Sheriff's Department's a lot of times gonna be out there doing TPR by themselves.
Okay.
Or the ambulance service.
Will do as much as they can, but they may not be able to administer the higher level drugs that a paramedic would, is that...
They don't have the drugs. They don't have the techniques, they don't have the advanced airways, they can't do, when you get into a critical situation, and believe it or not, one of the things we do more than anything else is pain management. You've got an eighty-six year old lady with a broken hip, she's got an hour-long ride to the hospital, if you don't give her some pain management, which only the paramedics can do, you could kill her before you get her to the hospital. She could literally have a heart attack or a stroke from the pain, intense pain of that hip being broke, so.
And we have heard in our early meetings about this need, what happens if you go from two point seven five to two?
Well, the problem is, I would drop from paramedic coverage at some point, because we, we work under what's called the Third Labor Standards Act's 207K plan. So we can work our guys two hundred and twelve hours in a twenty-eight day cycle before we have to give them comp time or overtime. And every cycle, we end up with about forty-five hours, fifty hours, depending on which cycle it is, that we have to have somebody else to cover, or we don't have anybody in that slot, or we're gonna pay a mountain of overtime. And the three-quarter time position will pay you back in spades just by not paying overtime, unless you wanna leave the shop empty, that position vacant during that period of time.
How long would that period of time be?
It'd be about, without that three-quarter time position, somewhere around fifty hours a week. And without Sulu and being reliable to call upon, the nice part, I mean, the other thing we do with this three-quarter time position is, we also use that as a, the next guy that probably wants a full-time job is sitting in that seat. We wanna try to hire personnel from Woodbury County if at all possible, or we don't have a hiring restriction with Woodbury County. But our success, we believe the success of the department is that we have local people providing the service that know the terrain, know the people, know the situations, and, I mean, I have people on my staff that, we go somewhere to lunch and they go, it's like going to lunch with the local scribe that knows everybody in town, so.
Any other questions, thoughts?
Well, it's obviously a big commitment, and it is a budget decision we're being asked to make in, I assume, a week, I don't know.
Yep.
We, the strategy is, Chairman Hung and I talked about, when this news was broke on Sulu and Paramedics, I visited with the Chair and I said, he called me that morning, matter of fact, before I could call him. And I said, here's what I think our strategy should be, do you agree? And that was basically let this dust settle just a little bit, because it was a big thud that hit the floor with that announcement, and then give me the chance to sort of categorize everything that was gonna be impacted, get a list, jail, work calls, paramedic assists, let's get that on a, let's get that on a list, and then let's start sorting through. And then I opened up dialogue with the fire chief and with Bob Welty down at Sulu and Paramedics and my counterparts in the region. And, you know, one of the things that right away we got asked about is, if we put a couple more paramedics on, can we do paramedic assists up into Plymouth County and down into Monona County? And I'm like, as much as we would love to, these are gonna be paid for by Woodbury County. In an extraordinary situation, we're not gonna let somebody die out there, but every county at this point needs to step up to the plate and start making provisions for EMS in their county. It's a sad, I mean, it's just a matter of fact.
Well, I don't think anybody here is against it, it's just like, where are we, how are we gonna fund it right now? I mean, I, I mean, we can talk about this for quite a while, but the fact remains, nobody's against it, but we just don't have the funding for it at the moment. I don't, nobody wants to see anybody get hurt or die or have an accident, it's just...
And it's not, and what, and it's really just, for us, it's, we're trying to take this system and develop it into something. You know, we're, we're working with a set of standards put out by the IOEMS Association System Standards, we've been able to take them from fifty-something to twenty-something, so they're a manageable number. Now we're working together as a five-county group at those standards, in ways, how can we work together in county and out of county to maybe reduce some of the costs of EMS and increase the number of people that wanna be involved? We've got one program that we're looking at nurse exceptions. Got a lot of nurses out here, can we teach them to be in the bathroom ambulance? The state allows them to work in the bathroom ambulance, can we teach them to be back there and do it safely? So we're actually, Ida Grove's looking at piling in a course with everybody else's support, to teach a twenty-hour course to nurses how to operate the bathroom ambulance. So everything creative we can come up with, we're doing, so.
Well, I appreciate, I think, the discussion tonight was very helpful. We'll look for it to be back as an action item, and part of that may be looking at different options, looking at those answers, and then the Board will make a decision. So appreciate it very much.
If we're gonna get into a situation, talking to Sulu and, if they say, hey, we're interested, then, like, we probably need to sit down with them and say, this is what we're interested in.
Well, and I think we'll take your input and make sure that we're, we all know that we're comparing apples to apples and what the repercussions of anything will be, so. And just so I know, although we may be looking at this this early, Supervisor Hung mentioned it next week, there's not a rush, like, I know you're talking January second, but it's not like, hey, if this doesn't happen in seven days, I wouldn't wanna put it off more than fourteen, but if we had to get some more information or whatever, that'd be all right here, right?
But the number we've put forward was for these people to start January second.
Okay.
Because if, if we can hire good experienced paramedics, they're gonna be partnered with a very experienced DMT, and we can work with their training on the job. That's what we did with Jerry. Jerry came on the job, he was in the front seat of the truck, he took his first call forty-five minutes into his first shift. So they're not gonna stand around for a six-week training period, we can train them on the, on the move and on the job.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, Senator Gary, both for, both items, and we'll get back on both.
Also, I...
We'll keep talking on both.
That shared with me today, Michelle's been involved in the donated vacation time thing too, so I want to tell Michelle thanks.
Okay, great, thank you very much. All right, well, we will move on to secondary roads, Mark and Nara. A is to consider the approval of resolution to set load limits on county bridges.
I thought you were gonna request like a half-hour, you know, recess or something, since Mark's been waiting, so.
Now, Mark gets really mad, he hits that podium, and he breaks it.
Breaks it.
Yeah.
Did a little of that last weekend, so.
All right.
Got that out of my system.
Okay, good.
What I have first is a bridge embargo resolution, this is based on our 2017 bridge inspections. As you can see on the resolution, two bridges have been recommended to be closed to traffic because of failures of substructure items. V-84-2 is one of our next three bridges coming down the design pike. We've got it designed, we've got permit, we're just finishing up on final plans. We're probably looking at a letting in the next two months to get that one taken care of. Bridge U-138, the other one listed for closure, is a 2019 structure. So that one is going to be closed for better than a year before we'll have the money to look at replacement. We'll try and shuffle it around and maybe bring it forward a little bit in our program. It is about a seven hundred thousand dollar structure. It's large and long, and we haven't figured out what we're gonna need for road grading yet on that one. So we don't even have, put a lot on any hydraulics, but we know the bridge just around the corner from it was a two hundred and forty-three foot beam bridge, and we're anticipating the same type structure on, to replace U-138. So again, we'll try and move forward as quick as we can, but it's already posted three tons, so it should not impact harvest much, although the fact that the substructure is falling apart on us kind of indicates that people might be ignoring the weight limit.
You think?
I'll move a levity. Second.
There's been a motion on the second, motion by Radig, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item...
One of the good things about this is, this is one of the smallest lists we've come out with to the Board, so we're gradually starting to get all these aging structures knocked down and replaced.
Very good. B is approve the contract and bond for project number L, CO-773-97.
This is for a couple of culvert repairs on County Road D-54 in advance of our planned Portland cement concrete overlay of this road next year. Dixon Construction was the successful low bidder. Total contract cost a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. I recommend approval.
Move it?
Second.
There's a motion on the second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed saying no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item C, accept the proposal and approve the contract for Haskell Avenue Bridge removal.
With this project being under fifty thousand dollars estimated, we took quotes, we received quotes back from three contractors. Dixon Construction was the low quote for twelve thousand dollars. The other two quotes were forty-one thousand from Nelson and Rock Construction of Ottawa, Iowa, and eighty thousand, five hundred dollars from Graves Construction of Spencer, Iowa. I recommend acceptance of the proposal and approval of the contract for the Haskell Avenue Bridge removal.
I move acceptance of that proposal for Haskell Avenue Bridge removal.
And, and the contract.
And the contract.
Second.
There's a motion on the second, any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion carries...
For the Board's information, work started today on 220th Street, the sub base has all been milled, reclaimed, packed into place. Tomorrow, we'll be adding the base stabilizer. Thursday, our SealCo contractor is set to move in and seal the surface on that, so we got lucky for once, everything kinda came together at the same time, so.
All right.
Knock on for Micah.
We'll take that. And the Highway 141 Bridge, we poured the deck last Wednesday, we'll do a beam break tomorrow, a seven-day beam break. We should be able to get bridge rail poured before the end of the week. Pavement removal on the south end is underway and probably three-quarters done as of, when we speak. So the contractor is trying to make Haywall sunshine this week. We've got five good days forecast, and we're hoping to get a lot of work done this week, so. That project is running two weeks behind, I say that because I know it's been one that Board members have gotten calls about, and we lost almost two weeks, and that last week of September, first week of October, we had seven out of ten rain days where the contractor wasn't able to get much done, so.
Monsoon season.
Seemed like it. They were talking how that seven inches of rain total was a good deal more than we're accustomed to seeing at this time of year.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mark, I think you have everything there for you.
Thank you.
Item 12, Building Services, Kenny Schmidt. A is approval of the Law Enforcement Center HVAC repairs, jail cell areas, nine zones.
The item you have before you are the repair for nine zones, HVAC zones at the LEC. In the jail cell areas of the facility, we've not been able to control temperatures since at least the time that I've been employed at Woodbury County. We've looked into that with CW Suter and Baker Group's assistance. Building Services looked into this to see what the problem might be. We thought originally that could possibly be a valve somewhere that was unidentified by us, that we couldn't find in a, in a location that we weren't aware of. So we did some in-depth looking to see what the problem might be. Unfortunately, we found that there wasn't one or two problems, but there was nine altogether. At some point in time, the original systems and original controls were removed from the actual main control system, and they were set up as standalone controls. In other words, we don't have any control over them through the system, and they are, they're all out here operating on their own. Unfortunately, they're not operating on their own, they're not operating at all in nine circumstances. And so now we're asking to go in and repair some valves, replace valves, and replace some controls, and bring those areas back into the main system, where eventually we hope to be able to control those and see what they're doing.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Is there discussion? So is this something that it was budgeted for previously, and it's coming from a CIP?
This was not previously budgeted for, and I see Dennis isn't here, but I've discussed this with him, it would, it would be a 2018 budget amendment.
Yeah, and so the question had come before me, is Acting Chair, on how we wanna delineate this, if we wanna take this from other CIP projects. My recommendation was not to, because this, typically for me, CIP, capital improvement projects, is going to have a length of years that you're borrowing monies for. This, to me, is more along the lines of a repair expense, and I think is appropriate to do through a budget amendment. So there's two roads that diverge in the wood, and that's the one I would recommend. So with that, I would move to approve the STAR control, LEC HVAC repairs in the amount of thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Second.
There's a motion on the second, this will take a 2018 budget amendment by Dennis, who had to leave.
What was the estimate on this again?
Sorry?
Six.
What was your estimate cost again?
The estimated cost is thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars for STAR controls, and five thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars for construction management with Baker Group.
We had those in two separate motions, you already done.
So we have the first motion for the STAR control, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. I'd also move to approve the Baker Group as construction manager in the amount of five thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. And finally, twelve B is approval of the Prairie Hills Training Center project lease purchase agreement. Kenny?
We finally come upon the total figures and calculations for the lease, lease purchase agreement for the new Prairie Hills Training Center. We did make some adjustments in, in coming to those final costs. A couple of the things we did is we completely, or did a total segregation from the old building, and by that, I mean, we segregated all the utilities, the electrical, septic systems, and potable water systems. We did that to make a clean break from the old system, to allow the board to make future decisions of any kind that they'd like to at the old facility, and to also, as far as the electrical portion went, we reduced from forty volt three phase to one twenty-two forty volt single phase, which takes away the demand charges that Mid-American charges. So, in the future, that'll reduce our, hopefully reduce our monthly electrical costs with the new facility. We also got away from the current well and potable water system in the old building. We could have tied into it, but we currently have to do monthly inspections, and a certified water operator has to do that for us. It's about two hundred and ten dollars for each inspection. And so, we thought it was a good point to try to break away from that, so we didn't have to do that monthly DNR reporting. So, we'll be installing a new well, so that'll also separate that utility. So, we'll, we will have a completely segregated building. The total cost is five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty cents. The estimated quarterly payments are twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-one per, seventy-one cents. Interest rate is three point two five percent, and I'd be willing to answer, or try to answer, any questions you might have.
Are there questions from the board?
What's the biggest load out there since we had three-phase on Prairie Hills? What's, probably just the HVAC system out there?
That's correct. That would be the biggest.
What needed three-phase on the old building? The boilers, or?
It was on the HVAC system, yes.
And what, what is the, are the rooftop units or, that are going on the new building?
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be, they won't be a chiller system. They'll be more like a, a commercial building AC system, where you've got a condenser and an evaporator, somewhat similar to what you have in your homes.
Okay. All right. Other questions, thoughts? Hearing on all those, oh, well, let's have a motion first. Forgive me. Motion to all move to approve the Prairie Hills lease purchase agreement documents, funding in the amount of five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars, twenty cents, and authorize the Board of Supervisors Chairman and Vice Chairman to execute the final legal lease purchase documents as required. I do. It's all right here.
Second. Would you like to say and/or?
Well, do you need, do you need both of us?
We do. We do need both of you, and also, I'd like to, if possible, ask Chairman Hung and yourself, Mr. Taylor, what date you might be available next week. I've got to put a specific date of signature on the contract.
Well, I'm around. Supervisor Hung, did you hear the question?
Next Monday.
Next Monday?
Yes.
By next, do you mean this or next? I always get that confused.
This, this coming Monday.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. So, I'll be around Monday as well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Kenny. Someday, we'll reward you by putting you in the beginning of the agenda. Item thirteen, Chairman's Report. I don't have a whole lot other than just please get agenda items to be timely, and we'll get them in the next agenda ready. We did not have a department head meeting. I was otherwise occupied, so I was actually taking county notes on the back of this, so I had a little girl last night.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And if her name, if it was a boy, it was going to be Ianelli, but it was a girl, so Irene. So, that's the Chairman's Report. That may be the last baby for me, but we'll see. Item fourteen, reports on committee meetings. Anyone? You'll see I put the Health and Wellness Committee minutes in the background. If you're interested, there's some good information there, and you can read those, and that's about it. All right. Citizen Concerns, item fifteen. Board Concerns, item sixteen. Hearing none. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.